Welcome. To protect our constituents, city officials, city staff, and the city request all members of the public to follow the guidance of the California Department of Health Services and the County of Santa Clara Health Officer Order to help control the spread of COVID-19. Additional information regarding COVID-19 is available on the city's website at www.camblecag.gov. The City of Campbell thanks you in advance for taking all the precautions to prevent the spreading of the virus. I call to order this regular meeting of the City of Campbell Council on this Tuesday, April 7, 2020. I'll ask the city clerk to make a statement about our virtual meeting.
I would like to make a statement for the record, and it should be reflected in the minutes, that the city council meeting is being conducted pursuant to provisions of the Brown Act and the recent executive order issued by the governor to facilitate teleconferencing to reduce the risk of COVID-19 transmission at public meetings. Ordinarily, the Brown Act sets strict rules for teleconferencing. It requires that each teleconference location be identified in the notice and the agenda, and that it be accessible to the public, that members of the public be allowed to address the council from that location, and the agenda be posted at that location. At least one member to be here in the council chambers, and at least a quorum of the council is participating within the City of Campbell. The governor's executive order has suspended those rules. The executive order does require that we continue to notice meetings in advance, and that we provide members of the public an opportunity to observe the meeting and offer public comment. This city council meeting is being livestreamed on Channel 26, the city's website, and YouTube. Public comment will be accepted via email at clerksoffice@camplecag.gov during the meeting before the close of the public comment on an item. Please note that the city cannot guarantee that any email sent during the meeting will be received by the close of the public comment. If you choose to email your comments during the meeting, please indicate in the subject line "for public comment", and list the item number or numbers you wish to comment on. Comments will be read during the comment period for that item, and you will be subject to the two-minute time limitation, approximately 250 words. If you would like to submit an oral request, or if there's any item on the consent calendar that you wish to comment on, please send your email now to allow time for me to receive them.
Thank you, and a roll call. I'm going to ask the city clerk, and because we are not all in the same room, all votes tonight for this meeting will be taken by a roll call. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Waterman.
Here.
Councilmember Byde.
Present.
Councilmember Resnikov.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gibbons.
Here.
Mayor Landry.
Present. At this point, we're going to say the Pledge of Allegiance. And I can't stand, because we're in the middle of where the video is being fed. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We have no special pre-presentations or proclamations at this point. We have no communications or petitions. And at this point, the meeting is open to oral requests. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the city council on any matter not on the agenda. Persons wishing to the city council are requested, but not required to, instead of a speaker card, send an email to the city clerk. Speakers are limited to two minutes, which will be read, and the law generally prohibits the council from discussing or taking actions on some items. However, the council may instruct staff accordingly regarding oral requests. I understand we have received an oral request through the city clerk. Wendy?
Yes, we received an oral request from Leslie Brown, and she would like me to read her request for the record. She stated, "I am a Campbell resident of 12 years and have long enjoyed the vibrancy of the downtown commercial district. While I understand and support the closure of nonessential businesses in our area, I do not believe this should extend to the Sunday farmer's market. During this time of crisis, it is more important than ever to ensure that farmer markets continue to safely provide fresh food to the community members that rely on them, while providing a lifeline for family farms. Farmer's markets are specifically identified in the statewide and Santa Clara County Shelter-in-Place Order as a business. Moreover, other farmer's markets in other areas have remained open, having taken appropriate measures to ensure social distancing. The rigorous regulations that normally govern farmer's markets exist to prevent the spread of infectious diseases. So farmer's markets and market vendors are exponentially well-prepared to enact additional precautions. The California Alliance of Farmer's Markets has drawn up these guidelines. Farmer's markets have specifically advantageous over supermarkets when it comes to the risk of spreading the coronavirus. A shortened supply chain means that food passes far fewer hands than other outlets. Open air with space to move around from people if needed. Market trips are brief, unlike prolonged events, and average shopper outings at the markets average around 20 to 30 minutes. Farmer markets booths are non-permanent, so products are not constantly being touched seven days a week, and can be wiped down regularly by vendors. Many people in California, including using CalFresh, women, infant, and children, benefits. Senior farmer's market nutrition programs vouchers rely on farmer's markets. As one of the major farmer markets in the South Bay, the closure of the Campbell Farmer's Market for several weeks, let alone several months, could contribute to the permanent loss of family farms in the area, which our community, food supplies, and economy relies on. I hope you will reconsider the closure of the farmer's market. Thank you, Leslie Brown.
Thank you. I do know that staff is working with the vendor for the farmer's market, and they continue to have a conversation. I see Councilmember or Vice Mayor Gibbons has her hand up.
There was a second oral request.
There was a second oral request, but the person asked that they didn't need it to be read. Steve Saunders.
Yeah, but it's acknowledged that there was a second one.
Yeah, I was getting there, yes. We really... Okay, any other city clerk? Do we have any other oral requests?
No oral requests were received other than the one by Steve Saunders, which indicated that he did not need it for the record, and we did post it with the agenda.
Thank you. At this point, I'd like to read the mayor's announcements, and I think we have some slides that are going to come up. Do we have the slides? I'm not seeing the slides.
Give her a second, they'll come up.
Okay, we got a little lag down here. Okay, they're being pulled up at this point. While we're waiting, I would just like to... Oh, turn the mic off, okay. So during these times, there's things that we all have to do our own, our DYO's. I found it interesting. I haven't had to color my hair myself for 27 years, and all of a sudden, I'm finding I don't have my hairdresser. So there you go, DYO. I want to bring everybody's attention to certain links and information to keep you current. The first one is our camplecag.gov website. If you scroll down, there's these five boxes that are currently displayed on your screen. It gives you business resource information. There's information on which businesses are delivering food or restaurants that are open, or other businesses. We have a virtual recreations website that they are providing activities for kids and adults. We have our senior store hours and which stores have them. And then we have facts versus rumors. Next slide. SCCgov.org is the County of Santa Clara's website. On the front page, they do have a COVID-19 link. And if you go to the dashboard, it is updated at the end of each day. They have the tally of how many people in the county have gotten sick, and if any deaths have occurred. Next slide. During these times, we want to make sure that everybody not only maintains their body health, but they maintain their brain health. Things that you can do is go out in your yard and exercise. Good old fashioned calisthenics are great. You can do your yoga, your Pilates, whatever. But we do want you to maintain your six-foot separation. Also important is your brain health. Doing Crosswood puzzles, Sakudo, playing cards, things like that, keep your mind stimulated and keep you active. Also, if you are having any issues with feeling like you're depressed or lonely, we do have on our next slide the 211 is a universal across-the-country telephone. You dial 211, and you can get connected to any topic that you wish help on. You can, if you're homeless, you can find resources there. If you're having any kind of emotional or mental issues, you can find help. You can also go to the website 211bayarea.org and/or call the 211. Next slide. I think there's one more. The city impacts due to the COVID response efforts. The city manager is going to talk here in a second about the impacts to city service deliveries, city facility closures, city workforce impacts, city financial impacts, and significant projects that continue to progress. City manager, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the council. Hopefully, you can hear me okay.
Yes.
I'm going to try to address some of this as well as possible. And I also want to point out that in response to this COVID, our website, as the mayor mentioned, has many updates, comprehensive information on the various public health orders, the closures of city facilities, has a list of event cancellations. It does have business resources, resources for seniors, and a virtual recreation link, as was mentioned. I wanted to start out by talking about some of the impacts on city service delivery. And as the council and the public is well aware, this emergency has caused some profound effects on everything that we do in our city government services, including the services that we provide to the public. I want to highlight some of the services that we are continuing to provide to be really clear for the council and the public what is still available. And first and foremost is a highlight of what we're doing for our seniors. Our community center is closed. Staff is performing well checks for all adult center members. There's been a tremendous outpouring of volunteers to help with that effort, and we're trying to utilize those volunteers in an efficient way to reach seniors. The senior nutrition program is still providing meals on a curbside pickup-only option. And the requirements for the senior nutrition program will be posted on our website for those that have questions. Our facility and park maintenance is certainly a reduced level of service currently, but we still are providing clean, safe park facilities, including restroom facilities. And we're ensuring basic health and safety, and that's why city staff is working on those facilities. Street signs and signals may not seem important to all, but it is important that traffic signals and signs stay operational. We continue to have staff monitor those and respond to operational failures. Likewise, with road hazards, potholes, storm drains being clogged during recent rain periods, staff is clearing that debris and fixing road hazards as they're being reported to us. There is a tool through our website to report public works concerns. Those reports can be filed anonymously, or they can be filed with someone registering their name and email address, so they could track the complaint and see the progress being made on their report. We also are responding to substandard housing concerns and code complaints that are of an urgent nature. We are taking all code complaints, but we're only actually responding to those that are housing concerns or urgent in nature. We're not accepting building or planning applications at this time. However, staff is continuing to work and accelerate the implementation of our online permitting system. As the council and the public may be aware, the city is in the process to implement an online permitting system that will help in these instances where we can't do in-face business, where applicants could submit their plans remotely through a computer, and our staff can be looking at those plans and providing comments remotely. We continue to accelerate and try to bring that system online. We are also administering a self-certification process for homeowners with active building permits on crucial projects that have to do with habitability of residences. And last, but probably certainly not least, our police department continues to respond to all calls for service, and I would encourage the council and members of the public to call 911 if there's any concerns that they have, and the police department will respond to that. I want to speak a little bit about city facility closures. Our city hall is closed to the public. Our playground areas, tennis courts, other hard courts, outdoor exercise equipment, has all been closed. The community center track was recently closed due to complaints for people not adhering to the social distancing requirements. And since that time, the track has temporary fencing installed at each entrance to the track, advising the track is closed until further notice. We've also increased our signage at the track and other public parks as well. Passive parks and open space areas, park restrooms, the Los Gatos Creek Trail, all remain open, but continue to be monitored by staff for social distancing compliance. And as I mentioned, we've increased signage at all of those facilities to make sure it's really clear what we're expecting for social distancing at those areas. With regard to city workforce impacts, we've implemented the city's Emergency Operation Action Plan. This is the plan that cities use to respond to emergencies, no matter what the emergency is. We've done that activation in coordination with the county, and we are participating daily in county emergency operations, phone calls, and discussions, so that we may coordinate with our county on services that may affect us or others outside of our boundaries in the county. We've implemented actions to mitigate the risk to employees and the public by developing several policies to guide employees during declared state of emergencies. Recently, we've prepared and distributed an emergency telework policy for city staff, and we've prepared an emergency responder policy. We've also implemented emergency family medical leave and emergency sick leave pursuant to recent federal law. We've communicated to the various bargaining unions that the city was exercising its right, and continues to exercise its right, to postpone meet-and-confer requirements that would normally be required, but are temporarily suspended during this emergency. We've released all temporary staff from their positions effective this week. Analyzing fiscal impacts is of paramount concern to us. The council and the public all are aware that this emergency will create profound impacts on our finances, and we are currently analyzing these negative impacts to the city's core revenue sources, such as property tax, sales tax, transient occupancy tax, licenses, permits, and recreation fees. Policy consideration for future discussions includes formal hiring freeze, evaluating contracts for services, and potential budget correction measures. I anticipate a comprehensive analysis will be provided to the council at its April 21 meeting, and will address most, if not all, of these points mentioned. And then last, but not least, I did want to mention some of the significant projects that continue to progress. Measure O was voted in by the taxpayers of Campbell, and we continue to evaluate the design proposals for both the library and the police. We received two different proposals, two different RFPs, and we're moving at a slightly different pace for the library and the police. But those evaluations are being done remotely and by virtual meeting, and we'll continue to make progress on those proposals. And then grant-funded projects, such as John D. Morgan Playground, is proceeding as is scheduled, and those grants was a million-dollar grant from the county with the city matching a million dollars for that project. And then last, a general plan update is progressing. The consultant that's working on the general plan is continuing to work on the administrative draft, and it's scheduled to be completed in the next couple weeks. And that is all for my report.
Thank you. At this point, we're going to move to the consent counter. Are there any council members who would like to pull an item from the consent counter? I already have a request for item three and four. Has the city clerk received any comments on any item to be pulled from consent?
No, I have not.
Okay, so with item three and four pulled, if no one else has any, I'll entertain a motion.
Move consent.
Second.
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call vote.
Councilmember Waterman.
I'm assuming you're moving without three and four, right?
Correct.
Councilmember Byde.
Aye.
Councilmember Resnikov.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gibbons.
Aye.
Mayor Landry.
Aye.
So at this point, we'll go to item number three, which is accept a donation of $5,000 from Kaiser Permanente for the 2020 Summer Concert Series and approve a corresponding budget amendment. Councilmember Resnikov.
Yes, thank you. So I just wanted to pull this because Kaiser does this every year, and they deserve some recognition for this, especially this year, when, you know, we don't know what the schedule is. If there isn't a schedule, an abbreviated schedule, they're still coming forth and funding the next series. So I thank them, and they're doing this while they're working through a pandemic and all that. So it's very nice of them to do this. They deserve recognition, and kudos to them for that. I want to thank them publicly.
Any other council comments? I would like to just ditto what the councilmember Resnikov stated. I think it's great. They were asked if they wanted to have their refund on their donation, and they said, "No, the concert series will go on eventually." So basically, we want you to have the donation. Can we do three and four as a roll call together?
We have to talk about four.
Can I comment on four?
Yes, I was going to be... Before we did a vote, I'm going to do three and four at the same. So number four is accept the donation from the Downtown Campbell Business Association for landscape renovations.
So the reason I asked to pull that same thing, we have businesses in the midst of dying out there and just trying to hang on, and they're actually giving to the city, which is really nice. It's a nice project, the median at Civic Center and Harrison. So I just want to thank them publicly and implore people, anybody listening, to let's support them in the meantime, let's keep them up in business and running. And when they come back, we should have, you know, come up with good ideas to get them going quickly, because when they go quickly, they hire people back. There's a lot of people out of work. It's sad to see what's downtown. But the fact that during the midst of all this, they're giving us a little money is a great gesture, and I hope that we're going to be there 100% to support them and bring them back, get people employed, which of course benefits the residents of the city too. But thanks to DCBA and all the businesses, and everybody, support them best you can during this time.
Thank you. Does any other... Yes, Councilmember Waterman.
Yeah, I obviously want to just echo that. I think, I'm sure all of us have, but I've spent a lot of time with Councilmember Resnikov, Director Kimorian, Michael Thomas. And I think we'll probably talk about that more later, but the whole idea of, you know, economic development, as Councilmember Resnikov said, trying to get people back moving. I've eaten at just about every restaurant that is doing, where you can pick up there, be it Sushi Confidential or... I could go through the whole line, and I'm going to miss a few, but I've been doing a lot of eating at the restaurants, Brown Chicken, Brown Cow, Tassora Winery, Blue, whatever the pizza place is called.
Blue Line.
Blue Line, that's right. And so you can get a great deal now, and they've all been really great. So in addition to buying food there, just talking to them, you know, what can we do to help as a city? And they've been really good about that. Talking to... It's been a long time with Michael Thomas talking this week, because it's been, it's a big part of my day job, you know, these new business loans that have come out with a bunch of acronyms and a lot of confusion. So trying to help some of the businesses behind all these PPP and IEDL, or whatever they're all called. I'm getting about two dozen calls a day on these. So, and a lot of these are coming from Campbell businesses. So many thanks to them. They're the ones giving us this. But I'm sure the discussion will come in later, but the time's going to come real shortly where we're going to have to give back to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council member? I would just like to thank again the Downtown Campbell Business Association for the donation of the $1,000 for the re-landscaping of the median islands at Civic Center Drive and Harrison. I encourage everybody to support not only our downtown businesses, but all of the businesses that are able to operate. Go to camplecag.gov again to find out which businesses and which restaurants are operating. All right, at this point, I'll take a motion.
I'll move on.
Second.
Roll call, please.
And so this is for both item three and four?
Correct.
Okay. Councilmember Waterman.
Aye.
Councilmember Byde.
Aye.
Councilmember Resnikov.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gibbons.
Aye.
Mayor Landry.
Aye. That motion passes. There are no public hearings or introductions of ordinances tonight. We do not have any new business. And the next item is council committee reports. Is there anybody that has a committee report? I have a couple of things I'll say, unless someone else has some items. Seeing none. Yes, Vice Mayor Gibbons.
Thank you. We're going to have to get red flags to wake. So the Silicon Valley Clean Energy Executive Board has met a couple of times, and we're going to be voting tomorrow night, but there has been a press release indicating that the people will not have their electricity cut off. It's the same program to protect everyone and have their bills worked out over the timeframe necessary. So no one has to worry about losing their electricity. Tomorrow, the board will be voting on new rates, and we're working hard to continue to keep those below PG&E's rates. And the board will also be asked to authorize special funding in the millions of dollars to assist low-income families. And I'll be able to tell you more, and there'll be press releases on that coming up. The ABAG is having a special meeting on Thursday. And in preparation for that, for the city's Association Legislative Committee, I prepared a paper, a white paper on the 2050 Plan and the RENA numbers. And staff has received that information because it has significant impact on what cities and city staff are going to be able to do going forward. MTC indicated they're going to complete this work, whether cities can contribute to it or not. So Thursday will be a difficult decision, but important. You know the museum has canceled everything. I think several of us have been participating in the various conference calls for elected officials with the Santa Clara County Public Health Department. Those have been very informative and appreciative. And the Santa Clara County CDVG Board has met, and I'm not sure how we're going to go forward and what kind of money we're going to have to fund the programs. It was a good example of, we had $450,000 worth of requests, and we only have maybe $250,000 to give out. And that's before all of this happened. And finally, I, like others, have been working with to help all the businesses in Campbell, specifically the small businesses and on unemployment. There'll be a post on the city webpage and on the chamber webpage. the city webpage and on the chamber webpage. Congresswoman Esche was going to be holding Thursday night a special town hall just for small businesses.
Thank you. I was going to bring that one up also. So Congresswoman Esche has been holding almost weekly, if not bi-weekly, Teletown meetings where she gives some information and then answers questions. If you want to participate, I would reach out to Anna Esche's office. Assemblymember Evan Lowe has also held Teletown meetings with numerous people. I think one of them, there was something like 700 people on the phone call. If not once a week, twice a week, the county of Santa Clara, it holds an elected official conference call where we, Dr. Cody presents and other county board members, and then we are able to ask questions. MTC and A-Bag, as Vice Mayor Gibbons talked about, tomorrow are some big discussions that are going on about the 2050 Plan that will dramatically affect Campbell. So in closing, I think that was all. I would just like to remind you to go to CampbellCA.gov, and also, we are looking at hosting a Campbell Teletown-type meeting. We don't have an exact date. It might be next Tuesday, but since we only meet the first and third Tuesdays of the month, we're thinking of the alternate week of hosting a Teletown. So thank you all for attending.
Mayor Landry?
I see. Sorry.
Thank you.
Bybee?
I wanted to acknowledge, first of all, the LST leadership that our public health officer, Dr. Cody, has been providing us during this pandemic, and she has an amazing, phenomenal team doing their best to coordinate information and with the cities. And so I so much appreciate that. I'd also like to thank our city staff for their efforts in working through this pandemic, keeping us, our essential services working and providing information to the citizens, which is really critical to have real-time information, and transparency is so important during this period. I'd also like to, although we haven't met as a DCBA representative, we haven't had a meeting, but I wanted to acknowledge their efforts. They do have a GoFundMe program in place to support the local businesses. So I would encourage residents to look at their website and try and support the businesses to the best that they can. The same with the Chamber of Commerce. They have an initiative that's going forward, a Campbell Care Initiative, and I would also encourage residents to look at their website and support our businesses to the extent we can. And the most important information that we can really adhere to to this day is to shelter in place and keep that distance and that social distance. It's working. It has some positive outcomes early on, so I would encourage our residents to really adhere to that. And again, thanks to the city staff for their efforts during this crisis.
Thank you. And I would like to just definitely recognize our city manager, who has been doing quite a lot of work responding to everything, keeping the city moving as much as possible, and thank the city clerk for being here to help tonight, and our guy downstairs who's filming. We have our IT on hold here also, and all our council members. Oh, I see one more hand up by Vice Mayor Gibbons.
We're just going to mention that the census is still going on, and participation in the census is really important now more than ever because the money that we will receive and the help we receive is going to be based on the census. So please, please, complete your census. It's very easy, less than 10 minutes online.
Thank you. At this point, we're going to adjourn. I would like to just add in closing that the Red Cross does need blood donations, if anybody can. We do have, Stanford Blood Center is on Hamilton Avenue, or you can go to Downtown San Jose on North First Street to the Red Cross. So please, if you can, donate blood. All right, at this point, I'm going to close the meeting, and thank you, and we'll re-adjourn at the regular council meeting on April 21st. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Bye. Thank you.
Yep.